Good evening. It's now six o'clock and the special meeting of the Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Mr. Berkey will lead our invocation. Ms. Smith will lead the Pledgeable Edgins. If you please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this evening. We thank you for this opportunity to gather together to look at the future of this city. We pray you'd be with the leaders, be with the citizenry. Father, as we work together, Lord, to make good decisions and then work hard as we look to make this a great place to live. Father, I pray that you would also be with this election tomorrow. Father, I pray as we go to the polling places, we'd look through your scripture to make the decisions that we make. And, Lord, have your will be done in that. And, Lord, I just pray you'd bless this evening now. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledgeable Edgins to our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can you have the roll call, please?
Commissioners Berkey.
Here.
Ervin.
Here.
Haycock.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chairman Voss.
Here.
Commissioners Jacobs.
Absent.
Malley.
Absent.
We have a call room.
Thank you. Yeah. I received a call from Mr. Jacobs just shortly before the meeting and he unfortunately is ill this evening and didn't want to share his illness with us. I thanked him for that, so we'll see him next week. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of ten minutes is allotted during this time for persons to give input to the commission. If you'd fill out a speaker's card, you'd be allotted two minutes for that purpose. I don't know. Do we have a speaker in?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker's card. Mr. Richard Wood.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Ward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Unfortunately, I've been tied up with business down in LA the last couple of months, so I can't get to many of these meetings. But I have watched them on the internet. And several meetings ago Chairman Voss commented on the term "green belt" and questioned that with regard to the water situation. I think a lot of us that were on the general plan CAG and a lot of private citizens really don't mean green belt. What that term means is native vegetation, which yes, will be brown a lot of the year. People, and I don't believe most people are talking about something that looks like the east coast with grass or a lot of irrigation, but just native vegetation as buffer zones for the native animal life and then bike trails, et cetera. But it's not really green. There may be some people that want green belts, but I think most of the people understand it's really native vegetation. So I just wanted to make that point in case anybody was, might be confused by that.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for pointing that out to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any others?
That's it.
Thank you. Next, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to review, as a review and discussion of the citywide general plan update. A special meeting, this special meeting is provided for a discussion and recap of the general plan policy document. We are currently reviewing section seven, which is the Plan for Economic Development and Vitality. And we got into the first few pages of it last time. However, we had asked for a presentation from the Lancaster Economic Development Redevelopment Agency on their strategic plans. So it would be appropriate at this time if we could hear from the agency and understand, is it Mr. Lawson? All right. Thank you. Please.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you and thanks for spending your time to help our community. We appreciate it. We'll go through this briefly. I'm happy to answer questions. We've given you a full copy of the document that you can look at at your leisure. This was a document that was adopted by the City Council back in 2006. It's a living, breathing document. We're in the process of updating it right now, so I'm interested in your opinions. We've really tried to boil down economic development into four strategic pillars that, you know, people can understand and kind of get their arms around a little bit. It's a very complex subject that could go on and on forever. You're to be commended for considering an economic development element in general plan. Obviously, that's not something the state requires, but it's something we've done in Lancaster for a long time. Recently, there was an article in the paper and I attended a meeting. The LAEDC is looking at doing an economic development strategy for the entire state of, or I'm sorry, county of Los Angeles that has never really been done before. So, you know, our city has kind of been ahead of that. You know, this is something that's been important to elected officials as long as I can remember. And it's something that everybody seems to understand and believe in. You know, statistically over the years, we've done surveys, we've done a partners program back in the early 90s. And traditionally, it's law enforcement, job creation, are kind of the number one, number two priorities. And so that hasn't changed. And I suspect this recession won't, you know, put it that much further down in any of the citizens' minds either. So with that, let me walk through this and then, like I said, happy to answer any questions you may have. We are LEADER, which is Lancaster Economic Development Redevelopment Agency. Couple of years ago, we split the department. We have housing, neighborhood revitalization. That's Elizabeth Brubaker. She's done an awful lot of terrific work and I'm sure will probably be the result of one of these presentations. But we have the economic development side and the redevelopment side. And our task, pretty simple, is to promote and encourage new economic growth and revitalize the community. We've wanted to have a plan for this instead of doing it helter-skelter. And so we introduced the strategic plan that includes four strategic pillars and is based on a simple concept. And that concept is that we have an economy that exists here, the Antelope Valley Regional Economy, that really is no better than the wealth that exists here. I think sometimes people feel that attraction of retail is a very important thing and we would agree with that. But the reason economies succeed is that they have what we call wealth importing industry or base industry. In the Antelope Valley, it's pretty simple. We've got aerospace. They've had that for a long time. Additionally, we have about 60,000 commuters that bring their paychecks every day back up into the Antelope Valley. Now, that has a lot of negative social connotations and that it's very hard to be the kind of parent you'd like to be if you're on that freeway every day and a commuter. So we've worked hard to create jobs here locally for those folks. We also, in the past, were overdependent upon aerospace. So we struck out on economic diversification. And we've actually had a fair amount of success with that in the city of Lancaster. But the realization is that we can't succeed as a community that doesn't have a vital economy. I don't care how much retail you bring into this town. If there aren't payrolls to be circulated through that retail, we won't, we won't succeed. I was at an international conference of shopping centers, a conference a couple of years back, and experienced national developer talked about the fact that, you know, none of this works if people don't make money. You know, we can plan and we can go crazy. At the end of the day, if, you know, there's not a people coming in the stores to keep the doors open, you know, it simply doesn't work. It's a little confusing for government sometimes because I think it's pretty clear what government does do. We do police protection. We fill potholes. But whose responsibility is it to create a strong economy? It's certainly the government's responsibility, but it's also the private sector's responsibility. And that's what economic development's about. It's kind of blending those two. And I'm proud to say Lancaster is in the forefront in the state of California. We certainly are in the forefront in the county of Los Angeles. As you see, we've been named as the most business-friendly city for the second year. The LAEDC had that. And that's because the elected officials here have put a real priority on this. And as we get into this, I'll explain what that means. But this is something none of us should ever forget. If tomorrow Edwards Air Force Base closed up and Plant 42 closed up, as happened in the early 90s, we lost 28 air force bases in the 90s, or in California, we'd all be in a world of hurt. So just because a job doesn't exist in this city sometimes, you know, don't think that doesn't affect our economy. You can imagine what would happen if Edwards closed up and we're very fortunate to have the aerospace. That's our backbone. The four pillars that the council approved and adopted back in 2006 are, number one, to improve the jobs housing balance, I'm sure, or imbalance, I'm sorry. I'm sure that Davis has told you about the fact that, you know, unlike the San Fernando Valley where they have few housing units, lots of jobs, we're the opposite. We have lots of housing opportunities. We've attracted a lot of people that have moved here for the quality of life, lack of congestion, good schools, affordable housing. But the job pace simply hasn't kept growth. And because of that, we end up sending 60,000 people out of the valley every day to be commuters. We're also looking at developing a 24th century workforce. We'll get into that in a little bit more detail. But we recognize our future is only going to be as good as the quality of our labor force, the kinds of companies that will find this area. The first thing they ask is, who's there to go to work for me? And some of the call center things we've had, they've actually come out, they didn't take my word for it. They actually wanted to go out and interview different companies and find out, you know, who, what is the workforce here? And of course, we have a terrific workforce, which we say all the time, but they almost believe in some instances we're too good to be true. But that workforce quality is very important and we'll show you some specifics about that. Revitalization of local commerce. That includes foremost the downtown. And we've gone through, we've done a good job with the downtown, but it's time to revisit that. We also need to make sure that the centers that have been closed up because new stores have been built, we can't forget about those folks. And we also need to make sure we get more retail here. You know, a lot of retail in the Antelope Valley is located adjacent to the Antelope Valley Mall because retail synergy existed there. And now the future is to create some retail synergy in the city of Lancaster. And we have a plan to do that. And then finally, and this might be something different than you think, but one of the tasks we have is to promote a stronger sense of community in the city of Lancaster. And as we get into the details of this, you'll see some of the surveys that we've done have shown that that's, that's an issue. That's a problem. And that's something that I'd like to tell you is love, peace, and happiness. But, you know, we're going to, we're going to try to show you the whole, whole program because we don't have all the solutions. We hope, we hope you'll have some good ideas. The jobs housing balance. We have to reduce barriers for firms that wanted to locate here. One of the biggest barriers for firms that want to locate here is we have almost zero, what we call certified sites. Lancaster Business Park is a good example of a certified site. And the biggest companies we have in the city came into the Lancaster Business Park because they can move in quickly. When we were finished with that, went out to Foxfield and created the Foxfield Business Park out there. Same kind of thing. We find particularly in this day and age, and as you know, as newer planning commissioners, the process of getting a building permit is more complex than ever. We have more agencies involved in the process of getting a building permit than I've seen in the 30 years that I've been doing this. And some I wouldn't have expected. You know, the Department of Fish and Game, you know, I'm a fisherman. I'm, I'm an advocate for that stuff. But when you start talking stream bed alteration permits, you know, in the middle of Foxfield, you know, you have to recognize that we get some eyebrows turned up from, from companies that look at the area. But that's a reality. And if we don't deal with that proactively, we will lose. We need to create these new certified sites. And we're in the process right now of looking at doing a couple of new business parks. Sadly, the city of Lancaster has had to be the developer of business parks. If you're down in the Los Angeles area, Orange County, or Valencia, you've got companies that step up developers and create these business parks. And I believe that's the best way to do it. I really sincerely believe the private sector's better than the government at doing this, if there's a market there. The trick is to create a market here and to convince those developers. And of course, in the middle of recession where everything shrunk back, it's harder to get them to do that. And so what you'll probably see is a proposal coming along that proposes a partnership with the developer or the agency would partner to get these, these sites. Because this isn't rocket science. This is, you can't put new industry in a community that doesn't have places for it to locate. And you can't just have a couple of lots that are fully improved and fully EIR'd and ready to roll. You need to have lots of different variety because industrial uses, business uses, take all kinds of forms. As you see, it's a big difference between a countrywide facility, 200,000 square feet, 1,600 jobs, and Rite Aid, which is a million square feet, almost 1,100 jobs. And they really do take different, different kinds of land uses. And then finally, and we're proud to say this, we've had a fair amount of success in attracting companies into the area. So much that we now need to think about business retention. Lance Campers, Deluxe Check, Rite Aid, Michael, Starwood, all companies that are being poached every day that we sit here. City of Amarillo, Texas, state of Texas actually has a special sales tax that they use on economic development. Jack Cole, the president of Lance Campers, one time got a check from Amarillo for eight million bucks. And the letter says, this isn't a joke. Come to Amarillo, we'll pay eight million dollars. And of course, brought it to me and I quickly said, gee, Jack, what are we doing for you? Everything good? We don't, don't want you to leave. But it's a very competitive world. And I'm here to tell you that California is not on the top of anybody's list. The attitude is anywhere but California. We had a company one time that we were trying to get to move out of the LA basin, had them all set, the president was sold. And he brought his boss out. He was actually from Illinois. And the boss said, oh, I've been told there's two places in the world I don't want to do business, Russia and California. I said, well, what's wrong with Russia? I mean, you know, I know California's got, got some problems. But it's, it's a real severe issue. We used to have 400 people up in Sacramento working for the State Trade and Commerce Agency. Today, we have three. There's more people answering the phone in the city of Lancaster if you're a businessman who wants to come here than the entire state of California. And that's just, just a reality and, and pretty tough. We need more rail service sites. We're seeing that. We've got a couple of uses that you'll see pretty quick that are, that are going to go on, on the rail. We need incentives to attract highway jobs. Years ago, we had a $2,000 per job, $2,000 per job program. And of course, with budgets being tight, you know, that hasn't been able to be funded. But, you know, that's, that's effective. You never talk to any company that they can't tell you immediately how many employees they have. So instantaneously, when we had the job program, they knew, you know, how much money we were talking about because that's what they're after. And then we want to prioritize reviews and approvals for key employers. Your planning staff works very well and as always, along with the whole city, been very business friendly. The reason we won this award is because of, of their activity. We need to keep thinking about that. You can't have processes tear people up. And I'd like to tell you, you can't treat everybody the same because there are certain land uses that will generate revenues for you. And there are certain land uses that will take revenues away from you. And you need to be cognizant of that. And you need to have a process that, that works that. 21st Century Workforce. We know our quality of our people will get the quality of companies. You know, you might think, well, we ought to have biotech. That'd be great. You know, let's bring biotech into the Antelope Valley. Pretty hard because we don't have a lot of biotech workers here. City of Santa Clarita's actually developed a biotech curriculum at their, their community college. If you looked at Palo Alto next to Stanford or San Diego, you know, those kinds of companies go, go to those sorts of places. But we have a number of programs that we'll, we'll talk about in a second. Time to stop blaming the schools and start helping them. Absolutely. We talk about lack of work ethic is a big issue. And we spent a long time talking about that and kind of come to the conclusion that, you know, work ethic doesn't start when you get to high school. If you don't have a strong work ethic as an elementary school student and treat school as you would ultimately a job, you're going to lose. That's pretty good if, if the parents are advocates of that. But that's not always the case in the Antelope Valley. And so we've got some programs that we're starting that really will, will just teach soft skills, very simple, basic stuff that is important for employees to have. We want to encourage entrepreneurship. We want to help people start new companies. And towards that end, we actually work with our Parks and Recreation Department. Just like you can take a class for basket weaving, you can also take a class on entrepreneurship. We have a business incubator where we start off people in there. As a matter of fact, Luis, who's the actual power behind this throne, is in a position to have a couple spaces open. So if you know people, startup companies looking to, to go into an incubator, he'd be happy to talk to you. Here's the four programs that we put together for the workforce development. One is the Teachers of Tomorrow Initiative. We found ironically that we actually have some pretty good jobs here, teaching. But there have been so few applicants in years past. Of course, recessions affected this a little bit. But some of the educational institutions had to go all the way to Seattle, bring people down here, train them up, get them going for a couple of years, and they take off. And so what we've said is, well, why not work with the high schools? And of course, the high schools and elementary schools have really plugged into this. We'll take you as a junior in high school and kind of give you a ton of love through the community college in Cal State Bakersfield, based on you signing a contract that says you'll come back and teach for Lancaster Educational Institution for three years. And everybody thinks that's a terrific idea. And that's almost reverse economic development, meaning the jobs are here. We just want to make sure we put people into those jobs. And we believe that people that are homegrown have a much higher propensity to stay in the city of Lancaster. So that's one program. Ethics First Initiative. Steve Goke and staff is getting ready to kick this off. Basically, it's a soft skills or work readiness class that we're going to take people right off the street. And they go through the class, they'll have a certificate that'll give them a leg up when they go to, to interview with, with the companies, through the mayor's business roundtable, the firms you're interested in that. We're also going to plug in what's called a vouchering system that works through our enterprise zone, which gives them a leg up because then they're eligible for the employer to get state hiring tax credits up to about $34,000 a year. to get state hiring tax credits up to about thirty-four thousand dollars a year, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. The latter initiative is more partnerships with the local employers in the high school districts. You know, the Mayor's Business Roundtable, there's not an employer there, there's not interested, willing and interested to hire interns, but we haven't had the linkage that we need. And so we're, we're pushing that. And then finally, the JC initiatives. One of the first meetings we had there, primarily the medical profession folks were saying, hey, we're having a heck of a time getting younger people to stick and stay. And they're concerned because there aren't the social networks here. And so, believe it or not, we now have a new chapter of the junior chambers, which makes me smile a little bit, because Generation X and Generation Y, you might not think would be interested in an institution that had been around for the last hundred years, I think, but they are. Luis is actually the chair of the local chapter, and they're tearing it up, and now there really is a networking group for anybody under forty. If you're over forty, but obviously something that's, that's been needed. As far as revitalization of commerce, downtown is a very important thing. We want to attract retail and restaurants to downtown. The thought kind of philosophically is that the chain restaurants are gonna want to go into the new shopping centers. Why shouldn't the entrepreneurial restaurants come into downtown? You know, Lemon Leaf would be an example of the kind of restaurant, if you had fifty of those downtown, it could be a tourist attraction. And so we've got programs that we're working with, planning, public work staff to, to move that ahead. We want to attract new top tax dollars, and of course, the recession has affected this a little bit, but not completely. I'm actually delighted to tell you, at the last International Conference of Shopping Centers meeting, we had ten meetings with different developers who still want to develop projects in the city of Lancaster. The key to that is major retailers. I think everybody thinks that, well, jeez, if we just want enough, or if we just make enough calls to Cheesecake Factory, we're all set. You know, they'll be here. But in truth, we probably, well, not in a long time, we'll have the demographics for Cheesecake Factory. And, and that's part of the recession. I was bragging about our six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar tract homes back at the peak, and now that's, that's not the case. The truth is, the Cheesecake Factories or any restaurants come into centers that have anchors. And anchors are everybody that you know, the department stores and the Targets and the Wal-Mart's, and that's evolving perpetually. You know, what used to be anchors when we were kids certainly aren't anchors now. I mean, companies are going out of business left and right. You know, you know, Mergens has just gone BK. Those anchors in turn attract sub-anchors, the Best Buys, the Sports Authority. Is it a little weird that we're a city of a hundred and fifty thousand people and our, our main sporting goods retailer is five thousand feet? That doesn't make any sense to me at all, so we, we pitched that. But that's how it works. You get the anchors first, sub-anchors, then the restaurants want to be where the sub-anchors are and stuff. And of course, in this day, there's an awful lot of stuff going on. There's a article in the Wall Street Journal talking about eighteen months free rent now is kind of the going rate for, for some of these people. That's just from developers. You can imagine what cities are doing. So very, very competitive. We want to promote Shop Lancaster, and we've got some, some innovative ideas on that that you'll see in conjunction with the Autumn Mall. And then realistically, we want to explore a new convention and tourism bureau. One of the things our branding campaign showed us is that the visitors that primarily through our Parks Department that come here because of sports tourism, softball, soccer, have terrific demographics. And our hotels are primarily open on the weekends. Most of the, the new hotels that you see that have been developed are fuller during the week because of business, air space obviously to a great extent. But you know, even the companies that we brought in use them. And so we've got these empty beds on weekends, why not fill them up? Why not push tourism a little bit? One of the ideas that's being considered is ecotourism, have you heard of this? Ecological tourism, a lot of cities kind of use their natural resources. Las Vegas has a hotel that's, that's devoted to that, and they don't have anything going on that we don't have going on in here. I mean, kayaking, horseback riding, hot air balloon, hiking, you know, all things that, that we could push. Sense of community, unified brand that will strengthen our marketing efforts. Obviously, this is a, a lot of the, the brand, the marketing we do. But we kind of had a brand that was developed about thirty years ago, and while this is a terrific seal that we have here, and it'll stay the city of Lancaster seal forever, but it doesn't really look like it, you know, was developed to appeal to Generation X and Generation Y. Because it wasn't. It was developed thirty years ago. Well, companies get this stuff. I mean, the branding concept, you know, if you look at logos, Target, CBS, Fortune recently had a magazine article competing, and Target ended up being the number one brand, at least in their, their mind in the world. You can imagine the money that they spend. As government, we're just kind of late to the game there. I mean, we act to some extent like everybody who lives here already and stuff, and the brand isn't an important issue, and that's just not true. The brand is a very important issue. So you know, we've gone through a, a process there. We actually brought in an expert in that that had done ninety different cities, and I was kind of thinking, what are you gonna tell me about the city of Lancaster that I don't already know? There was a lot. You know, the, the fact that we have lack of congestion, clear skies, clear air, very huge competitive advantage over even Santa Clarita. Certainly the Riverside area, they can't talk about clear air. Air quality is a very important thing. The lack of congestion that exists because of the public works folks. I mean, you know, the left-hand turn arrows that exist up here, the grid street system that we have, that is a competitive advantage. The positive side, the positive attitude that we need, you know, you're not gonna attract young people, and, you know, unless if, if we have this positive can-do attitude, the potential that exists here. You know, we really are embryonic, even though we're a city of a hundred and fifty thousand people, we have such a great opportunity for the future. And so the consultant kind of put this all together in a neat report, and you're welcome to, to see that. We can give them, give them a copy if they'd like. We want to work with local businesses who do safer and stronger neighborhoods, and that's really Liz's group, and a number of folks are working on that, but that's, that's unprecedented and absolutely necessary. You know, we want to expand our communication. We've got a new website we're gonna be putting up, and we do lots of newsletters and, and different kind of communication vehicles. The strategic plan and the general plan, which of course, we're doing here, and, and we hope that you'll, you'll positively consider this. You know, we mentioned we're one of the few cities that actually does do the economic development element. And, you know, we're really in this together. I think we kind of have an unprecedented opportunity here, more citizen participation than we've ever had, and I just couldn't, couldn't welcome it more. This is obviously a very short presentation for, you know, a document, you know, a process that, you know, we could talk hours about, but I kind of wanted to hit the high points. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I will be here as you walk through this stuff. I understand some of the nomenclature, you know, we have concerns about that, but...
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Members may have some comments or questions. Please go ahead if you do.
Thought that was a great brief, very concise. I know it answered a lot of questions that I had last week, so I appreciate it.
Good.
Thank you very much, and it was very enlightening and, and real exciting plan. So thank you for sharing with us, and I'll look forward to reading the whole document.
Good.
I did want to ask about the school programs on work ethic. What, what, you said you were starting a program, the city's starting a program. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Okay. This is something that's been done for a long time in the cities. They, schools, they have what they call the Career Prep Council. And kind of the realization was that we have a college prep curriculum, when nationally and certainly from our schools, only about twenty percent go on to college. And that's a very important thing, and the career aspect of that, work ethic is, is important. But we ask about, business asks about, what about the eighty percent or other eighty percent of the customers? You know, what are we doing there? We interviewed companies and found that the most important thing everybody was looking for is a strong work ethic. Well, what's that mean? And every, you know, initially, the schools all said, oh, we all teach that, we teach that every day. Well, if it's so important, why shouldn't we teach it specifically? So they broke down the concept into trustworthy, respectful, responsible, and fair, kind of key components that even the elementary school kids started to understand. And that's been implemented through the schools here for a long time, and continues to be the most important thing that business wants from new employers. Of course, we have folk, new folks that move up here, and that soft skill or that work readiness is frequently lacking, because an awful lot of the companies that we, we brought in here hire folks right off the street. You know, there doesn't have to be a great deal of training, they'll, they'll train them, train them themselves. But it's, the Career Prep Council still exists, meets once a month. High School District is the core group behind it, but it has involvement from all of the elementary school districts and certainly the college. And that push, the, the issue that we, we perpetually fight is the, the college bound versus the, the, what they call technical skills, because the jobs for college educated folk have actually decreased, and the technical skilled jobs and medical and just a whole bunch of stuff have increased a great deal. And so it's, it's, it's a continuing battle. I think, quite honestly, in our state, the UC system does a better job in telling freshmen exactly what they need, and yet in, in some cases, my belief is wild horses couldn't stop some of those kids. And I'm not, and, and they're, they're terrific, and we do, you know, incredible things with that. But it's that eighty percent I'm concerned about. Even the lower end doesn't bother me too much, it's kind of the mid-kid. And, and the realization, we think, needs to be recognizing the special skills that these kids have. Because it may not be the academic side, you know, the, the way we measure today. My guess is, is pretty much if you wanted to go to work at Lance Camper and you have a, an aptitude building cabinets, that's what he's looking for. And so how do we connect those skill sets with the special skills that all these kids have? And, and, you know, and we're doing it all the time, we just got another class we're gonna start off, and we've got a pilot program for thirty kids. Kids, could be adults too. And today, I say, well, you know, you might get two or four hundred. Because, you know, last time I saw a line in the paper for people signing up for a fast food job, you know, there are, are some people that want to do it. But we'd love to have your help.
All right, very good. Thank you. Chairman.
One thing I wanted to, wanted to ask real quick, is last week, we looked at the concept in the general plan of having enough jobs here for the entire workforce, that being one of the goals. We're nowhere close to that right now. Any projection I've seen that has gone out to even twenty thirty has shown a larger percentage of commuters. Certainly a larger number of jobs here, but with, with the growth of population. How, how do we go after those jobs? I mean, I can see that if somebody comes looking at us, that we look fairly attractive, but how are we marketing Lancaster outside of this area?
Well, first thing is that we have to have sites. It makes no sense at all to, to do a marketing campaign if you don't, you don't have sites. And so we need to solve that, and that's, that's a huge issue for us. And as I mentioned, harder all the time to get that done. One of the big problems we have, and I'm sure you've talked about, is the whole Antelope Valley was subdivided up into acre and quarter parcels before the city incorporated in nineteen seventy-seven. So if you look at the Fox Field Industrial Quarter, we have over three thousand ownerships out there, owned by people literally all over the world. And we, the third phase of Lancaster Business Park originally, a hundred and sixty acre, had seventy individual owners in there. And in conjunction with the redevelopment agency, we were able to go out and, you know, assemble that into a working business park. And so that, we've got developers right now, they're saying things like, well, I want two hundred and fifty acres. You know how hard it is to find two hundred and fifty acres in the city of Lancaster to do a business park? Seems nuts.
Impossible. It's nearly impossible.
Yeah, you just wouldn't think that, that'd be the condition.
Maybe the members don't know your background. Could you comment on, on, on your history with the Lancaster Business Park, for instance, and, and some of the other background, just to bring everybody up to speed?
I ran a private corporation for seventeen years that built the Lancaster Business Park. A million years ago, I was the city manager when the city first incorporated. I've really dedicated my life to bringing jobs into this area, and I've been very involved in our statewide professional association, past president of what's called California Association for Local Economic Development. And we really are real class in that. I'll put our programs up against anybody's. But the, each wave of recession creates more issues. We get people excited in the boom times, the developers and the builders, and they're all coming out here, and stuff. Here comes a wave of recession that pushes them all back into the LA area, and that's exactly sadly what we're going through now. So we will, we continue to market through the website, and that's what we're really seeing. That's, that's probably the most effective tool, to the point that that's, that's getting most of our attention. But we also run spots in the LA Business Journal, the San Fernando Valley Business Journal, very involved in the LAEDC, primarily because we're the last place in Los Angeles County that this business can expand. The rest of LA County, they're in a position where they have residential developers who are pushing to have the, what little industrial property they have left, rezone residential because it's so much more valuable. So we're ideally positioned, but it is something that the government has to make happen. And I don't think we'll ever be effective until we get the private sector, until people really recognize the market. My dream would be five or six business parks built, not by the city of Lancaster, but by entrepreneurs who believe in the area. And that's the, the tipping point, that we just haven't been able, like, we were almost there last good time, two thousand and five, which ain't that long ago. But today, we're slipping back, and every day I get calls that, yeah, it's a little hard to get the lenders interested. You can imagine what the lending institutions are going through these days.
You've mentioned a few times entrepreneurs, and we're talking about school programs teaching kids how to be good employees. Do we have programs in the schools to teach them how to be entrepreneurs?
Not to the point that we should. There used to be a deal called Junior Achievement. Are you familiar with that?
Sure.
Great curriculum and stuff, and today, to my knowledge, we don't have any of that going on.
Right, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, and that's, that's a huge shame, because we do do Luis's group training with, I told you, through Parks and Recreation, where we teach an entrepreneurial training class. In fact, we have one now for what we call baby businesses, kind of not just pure startups, but the first, first phase. And that, those are heavily attended. You know, we need to work more, you know, we're looking at actually maybe doing an incubator in downtown that could be for, for restaurants.
If I'm not mistaken, those are geared towards folks that are thinking about opening businesses, correct?
Yes.
Those types of programs. Where I think one of the challenges we have in this community is, most communities, is creating a frame of mind in students, second grade on up.
Entrepreneurial is okay.
Yeah, why not be a business owner instead of work for somebody?
Yeah, that's true. And that's, that's a valid criticism, and that's something we're not doing as strong as we should.
Gotcha. Okay. Very enlightening, though. Enjoyed your presentation.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Bernie, thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate your time tonight to bring this information to us, and congratulations on a fine apartment and great success through the years. I've, I've had, certainly had the pleasure of working very closely with you in the past, and it's always a pleasurable experience, that's for sure. Thank you again. And you guys can sneak away if you want. All right. Where we left off last time was section sixteen point two point three. Interestingly enough, focused on having sufficient developable sites in the community ready for new businesses. And I think sixteen point two point three on page, Roman number seven. Twelve, I think it is.
That's correct.
Yeah, there you go. So, all right. Okay, any comments on that section or questions?
I think the only thing I'd like to comment on is, with the presentation we just saw, I think the only thing I'd like to comment on is with the presentation we just saw, it seemed like the passion and the need was to have sites that are ready for businesses to come up to. And on 16.2.3.8, it talks about to continue to encourage the preparation of suitable sized improved industrial office, retail, hotel, and institutional sites. How exactly is that done? How exactly do we pursue that?
Work with the developer, oh, I'm sorry. To put together the site and then work with the staff to come up with a way to fund the infrastructure. I think the developers will do that, but there's lots of water lines that need to be extended and sewer lines, and that's the task, so.
You also mentioned that sometimes you have to build it and they will come, the city get involved. What's an example of that in our community?
Well, Lancaster Business Park would be a perfect example. 240 acre business park today has about 4,100 people working in it and over 110 different companies. But for the city of Lancaster doing that, it simply wouldn't have happened.
Wouldn't have happened.
Under 16.3, we provisions of municipal revenue generating land uses, and principally, the background tells us that sales tax generating uses are the primary focus of revenue generating. However, obviously, increment on property value, on property tax value in the redevelopment agency area also generates a considerable income to the city. Although it is, the expenditure of that is limited to the redevelopment agency project areas. I read somewhere in here, and I can't remember where exactly, that something's going to expire in 2012. What is that?
The enterprise zone.
The enterprise zone, so.
Right, and this is already working to get an extension on that.
And that's a very important element.
Very, very important, right.
All right, very good. Under 16.3, the word maintain development patterns and growth, and I personally, I think that's kind of a, I don't know, maintain kind of a weak word to me. I would think, I don't know what word you would use to encourage it, but maintain seems kind of weak to me. I don't know. Because it is such an important, it's, the revenue generating is the vitality of the community. It's what pays the freight and the day-to-day operations and all the services the municipal government provide. And I don't know what would be a better word than that. Encourage it, I don't know. But, yeah, right.
We could definitely seek a stronger word there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, but maybe you can come up with it. All right, Mr. Lawson did mention under 16.3.1B, the Foxfield industrials and commercial sites and the assemblage, the issue of assemblage of small lots and putting those lots together to create. And is that one of your target areas, Bernie?
Absolutely, yeah. The Foxfield industrial area is what we're going to call, specific plan's been done, and now we're in the process of updating that because it's been years since it's been done, EIR stuff, and there are still environmental concerns that really need to be looked at more carefully. We have a fair amount of interest in some of the larger parcels that are out there. In fact, we've got a developer coming out of Sacramento that's bought 40 acres. But tough stuff. You know, along comes the water issue. And, you know, he wants to build a spec building, and so we know we've got to be an advocate for him to get a will serve letter. And so, you know, it's tough.
16.3.2 talks about providing, as a policy of the general plan, providing sufficient amount of land zone for each type of major revenue generating land use to allow for competitive development opportunities among many potential sites with a broad range of site features 16.3.3 talks about your certified non-residential sites for remote expansion revenue generating, which you touched on this evening. On 16.3.3B, you mentioned the underserved regional retail demand. Could somebody define that for us? An example or two, if there is one?
Well, the Amargosa Creek project is probably the best example of that. And when we do a demographic analysis, we gave you quite a bit of propaganda today, but this is a piece that you can see. This is what we pass out at the ICSC conferences. The agency and city is participating in the infrastructure there, the Amargosa Creek. But the belief is, certainly through the planners and through us, too, that the future of retail will not be enclosed malls. It'll be more of what they call lifestyle centers, open-air centers, and Sophie's an expert in that. And we want to be geared up and in a position to take advantage of that when the next wave comes. I think that's ideally located. I know demographically, it's, you know, has the highest population because it's far south in our retail region. The reason Costco went there and moved is to be more located to the center of the population center, you know, further south in our community, although not too far south because that would be Palmdale. But that location is very well-located, and I think you'll see a major development occur. We have also, the agency has purchased some extra property around the auto mall and actually a 20-acre parcel on the other side of the freeway, directly on the other side of the auto mall, because when the Lexus dealer wants to come to Lancaster, we want to have a site to put him there.
All right, thank you. One of our tasks, or one of the staff in our task as it relates to a new program under 16.4.1B, amend the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance to create the transit village development standards to adhere to the established transit village district of the general plan. I'm trying to recall if I read in here about the downtown, Lancaster downtown plan. Is that specifically identified as a specific action item in the general plan as well?
As far as...
Modifying the zoning regulations and subdivision ordinance?
Yeah, these, I don't know if that's, if it's listed in the specific plan, the downtown specific plan is what you're referring to, what this specific action is referring to here is back a number of years ago, they actually adopted the transit village overlay zone for the downtown area. That covers part, but not all of that square mile of the downtown area. However, we never went back and really implemented ordinance, zoning ordinance provisions, or updated the zoning ordinance to create transit village district guidelines. And so that's really what this specific action is calling out.
Would it be necessary to do the same thing for the downtown specific plan area?
Well, yeah, there's a, I think actually, what these four, if you look from specific action 1641A through specific action 1641F, all are talking about the creation of this transit village district. And the downtown specific plan is a component of that. And the north, I always forget the title of this, it's a tongue twister, but the north downtown transit village plan, which is that area north between Avenue I and Boulevard that was done before the actual downtown specific plan, is also a component of it. And the MetroLink station is the center, it covers the core of that. But eventually, we'll be looking to the south of the Boulevard and taking in the area down to Avenue J and taking a very similar look at that. And also eventually probably expanding east of the MetroLink station to include revitalization programs in that area. It's a very important area to look at in the future. So all of these, the transit village district is really this overriding area that encompasses all of these different revitalization efforts that are underway and will be undertaking in the future. So it's possible, as we believe one of these specific actions talks about, is going back and even expanding the boundaries of that transit village district after it's turned into the future.
Something I've mentioned a time or two before and didn't realize it was in here, but under 16.4.5, where it talks about examining the need to expand government civic-related uses in the downtown area to accommodate community needs. And I think there's another section in here talks about, I don't know, maybe it wasn't in this, it was in another section as it relates to services for the outlying area, for municipal services for outlying area, and maybe it was public work section, I think is probably where that was. But it seems like, at least from my point of view, that we're, you're tending to box yourself in and limit your opportunities around this complex. And as the city grows, if it reaches the kind of population that's estimated by the year 2030, your facility here certainly is going to be well undersized and underparked and all those other things, so. Maybe somebody up the food chain's paying attention to that.
Good observation.
I kind of like 16.5, the whole...
16.5, the talk...
Yeah, dream team thing. Let's have a horse racetrack, a new convention center in downtown Lancaster, new entertainment uses. I think that's wonderful. It's all part of the plan. We're looking forward to it.
Well, I think then it would be incumbent upon us then when we get into the identification and the mapping of suitable properties and suitable zoning. I don't know what the zoning would be for, other than what public use potentially for those types of uses that are identified in these specific actions under 16.5.3. Somebody probably ought to remind us when we get to that point. If we're talking about racetracks and auto and horse-type racetracks, that's a pretty serious venue. Takes a lot of dirt and...
Don't forget the golf course.
Notice under 16.5.3D, the conference center with supporting hotels, says it's implemented, and I'm not sure if that status is correct.
Not like it should be.
It's what?
It's not like it should be. Since we've lost the Essex House, we are still after a facility that could replicate that. And the fair is very interested in more.
So it should be, maybe changed to an existing program as opposed to implement it?
Under progress, right.
That we're...
Yes, I agree.
What we probably would do there is label it a revised existing program or expand the program, right? Because it did exist before.
Whatever the right language is, but I know the two new hotels that just recently opened have certain conference facilities in them, but they're not really a conference center. I mean, they're very nice and they seat up to maybe 120 or something, as I recall.
And then there's a space for a third hotel that would be larger, full-service, and have a convention facility in the process.
Very good. So if somebody was going to build a conference center, a convention center in that area, that would be a more appropriate area to do it with the synergism of the hotels and that type of thing, right?
Right.
Yeah, it would be over by where the new, is it Hampton Inn?
At first reading on 16.6, it triggered my thought that that seems to be somewhat restrictive to ensure that new development pays for all of the infrastructure, public facilities costs associated with new development. Then I look back at the previous general plan, and it's the same language, and it's been there for a long time. You know, it's not as, it's more negative than positive, and I don't know how to turn that language into a positive, into positive language. But obviously, most developments stand alone and cover their costs of infrastructure other than those that get some help from redevelopment agency. But in effect, they're fully funded and the cost of development is paid in full by the development team, which could include the redevelopment agency. So I guess it's all right. I just...
There's also a footnote down there at the bottom, footnote one.
Right, right. And it's all the same. I cross-checked it all, just, I was curious more than anything else.
I agree about the language, though, and I don't know how you would remedy that either, but it just sounds like a big turnoff, actually, the way it's written.
Yeah, a lot of this section...
And we talk about, you know, reducing barriers for people to come in, and then we tell them...
About that word, required.
Right.
Yeah, a lot of this section had, actually, it was more extensive under the former document and included many references to the urban structure program, which was the fiscal model that was adopted in the early 1990s and is now being phased out. So we did restructure some of this, but much of the language, other than dropping out policies and programs that applied to that particular financial model, were left in place.
Yeah, there's some key words in the dictionary that just rankle the entrepreneurial community. One of them is policy, one of them is require, shall. Those words are just wonderful to read in the, when you're trying to simulate and create wealth, that's for sure. I don't know how to fix it. I just throwing it out.
Well, I guess I'd like to know in 16.6.3A, what exactly is financially self-supporting
That's under a new program, right?
Is that the same concept that everything has to pay for itself? Or does it continue longer than just the building?
Yeah, I really, I think, really think what this particular specific action is referring to is more along the lines of self-supporting communities. Like if you have large master plans that include a lot of different types of uses but predominantly are residential, that you want them to be self-sufficient, particularly if they were, they are located away from urban services, you want them to be able to stand on their own. Otherwise, you incur the, in perpetuity, the cost for serving those facilities, you know, forever, for the life of the project, which could be decades. So I think really that's what this specific action is referring to.
So this is more than just the initial building and the infrastructure required for a facility. It continues beyond the opening and the occupation and everything. It's...
Yeah, this is referring to self-sufficient development. In other words, that it, you create a situation whereby that development, it does not become a burden on the community as far as additional costs for services that are incurred. So when you look at large-scale community developments, which we had at the time that this section was put together, we had several proposals, as we do now, for large-scale developments. And there are several, not only this policy, but in other areas of the document that you'll see also in the Plan for Physical Developments, very similar policies to this relating to self-sufficient development.
I was kind of interested in the general plan from the economic development organization that specifically targeted residential development, saying that they should be, I don't know what the word, I can't remember what exactly it said, but some monies had to be paid by a residential developer for developing homes because that would increase the number of jobs that were necessary. I think it's 1.6 jobs.
Oh, the jobs housing balance, is that, yeah.
To help equal. Is this kind of the same, is this coming out of the kind of the same feeling or...
The jobs housing balance really is a ratio that... The jobs housing balance really is a ratio that measures the number of houses to the number of jobs that are available. In this community out here, as Vern mentioned earlier, it's an imbalance to the site of housing as opposed to jobs, and is projected to be so into the future. And so we're a housing-rich area and a job-poor area. That's why we have such a large commuter force. You mentioned 67,000, and that's the entire valley, I'd assume.
Entire economic region.
So that's really what the jobs housing ratio, and to reach that, there's a ratio that's assumed to be imbalance, imbalance. And that's what that is. But this really is referring to promoting self-sufficient communities. In other words, you build a large community, like there are several that are being planned out in the Tahoe Ranch area. I mean, these are large scale. They're supposed to be, they tout themselves to be self-sufficient. In other words, when they're built out, they will have housing and jobs and commercial development to support the community that lives within these large-scale developments. Now, they won't be commuting back and forth necessarily. They can maintain all their needs within that community. And that's really what it's talking about by self-supporting development, self-sufficient development, that is, it supplies for its own needs within that development rather than relying on services from some other urban area or the urban core.
So if you're, so for instance, if a proposal for a quote "new" community did not contain all of the elements you just defined, the jobs, the commercial support, you didn't say it, but education, then it would not meet this criteria and wouldn't be considered as a viable project? Would that be the result?
Again, we're talking about large-scale communities that are located away from the urbanizing area, at some distance from the urbanizing area. And not necessarily, we're not talking about a residential development, a residential subdivision, but something that's on the scale of several thousand homes or several thousand units and that is not contiguous to the urban core.
And in fact, of course, that's our precise challenge. Tahoe Ranch, Irvine, Santa Clarita had single landowners who really went through and planned it out just that way. They balanced the commercial, the industrial, the residential. Unfortunately, before we even became into existence, this area got subdivided up to the point that it's almost impossible to really look at a community-wide plan like that. But there are several larger ownerships, in many instances they've been put together, that could be real opportunities in the future to think along these lines because...
You're not talking about a, you know, an 80-acre development. You're talking about 800 acres or 8,000 or whatever.
Yeah, as big as we can get.
As long as we're clear that we're not identifying your, and I don't want to categorize them as normal or ordinary, but a typical tract development, for instance, it would not be excluded because of this new specific action. Okay.
Can I just ask one question? When you say that there are 60,000 commuters, does that include the people that go to Edwards or is it just the people that go down below?
Actually, it's the people to LA. You know, and the reason we know that is we do a labor base analysis every three years. Al Gobart and Associates do that. And, yeah, they count them up, and so, no, those aren't considered 60,000 to LA.
We've had some discussion at length about the impact of Edwards and the folks that work there that reside here and commute and those impacts and services that...
We're so fortunate. We are so fortunate to have Edward Air Force Base. And the level of the jobs that they have out there, spectacular.
All right. Okay. All right, the next section, the last section that we have is the Plan for Physical Development. Excuse me. Yes, it is. Before we go into that, it's been our practice to take public testimony on the section that we've just reviewed, so it's fresh in everyone's mind. So I don't know if we have speaker cards of folks who are, would wish to speak on the Plan for Economic Development and Vitality. So appreciate you filling out a card, and we'll hear you now. If you don't, we'll move on. Do you have any cards?
I don't have any cards at the present. Now, we have one.
Make sure the clerk gets one.
Yeah, I just like, I've had a few ideas in my head. I've lived out here all...
Just a moment, just a moment, just a moment. Hang on. Okay, Mr. Zink, go ahead.
Yeah, I've just, I've lived out here all my whole life. My family came out here in 1900, so Homestead in Little Rock. And I've seen the whole area grow and prosper, and I've seen some good things and some bad things. But I was talking about the general plan for Lancaster. I see two, one reason I think Lancaster needs to have a visionary plan, something that's big, something that's, you can really say, wow, kind of like they did the LA Aqueduct, Mahalan did, or the Golden Gate Bridge, or Boulder Dam, and like we did with the Palmdale Airport in the 60s. If I go to Hawaii, I go to Cancun, anywhere, I meet somebody, they say, where are you from? Palmdale, Lancaster. They say, how's the airport doing? I mean, that thing has got more spin through the world than anything I know. And what I'd like to see is this inland import come about, inland port come about and bring the rails and everything up here to the Antelope Valley. I really think this is what we need to concentrate on, and I think it will be the biggest visionary thing that the city of Lancaster and Palmdale and the county can do for this area to create jobs. I also believe that there needs to be a railroad spur going out to Foxfield. I just can't imagine an industrial area, when I look at Rancho Cucamonga in Ontario, and I see what they've done with their areas, to me, they're like brother and sister twins of Antelope Valley, but they're just 10 years ahead. And why don't we have a rail going out to the Foxfield Airport? Why don't we have a golf course in a city of 150,000 people? It just doesn't really make sense. We've got all this sewer water, let's use a golf course. Let's get something that's attractive to this area. Also, I believe that the next thing we need to do is make the Avenue D 138, we need to put it on H8. By bringing that down closer into Lancaster, it would create a more dynamic commercial base for Lancaster, and we'll benefit from it. Because people from Centennial, the city, Fort Tahoe is proposing, they'll come that way to Lancaster to shop regionally. Instead of going down to Valencia, they'll come to Lancaster. This is something that we can do and propose for the future. Oh, we've got so many bond measures on the ballot for solar, wind, all this stuff. Why can't we go to these companies? Palmdale's building their new power plant. You guys are building a power plant. Why can't we build these solar panels here in Lancaster or Palmdale? These projects aren't going to be built for a couple more years. Why can't we get these manufacturers together and start building those solar panels, those wind turbines that are being installed up in Tatchby for the city of LA, instead of getting all these, having them all railed all the way over to the Antelope Valley from the Mideast? It just doesn't make sense when we have people here that can build these things here and create jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Albert Prau, I hope I pronounced that right.
Mr. Prau?
Hi, my name is Albert Prau. I'm the CEO of Landstone Communities located at 12011 San Vicente in Los Angeles. And I actually came here for a different reason tonight. I thought we were going to talk about the land use plan and the citizens' preference for that plan and going to speak on that, but since I was here, and I've sat in through a number of your sessions, I overheard the conversation you just now had about objective for Plan 16.6 and the fact that master plan communities should be self-sufficient. And I want to raise for your consideration the difference, the potential difference between a large-scale residential development that basically pays for itself. Residential development oftentimes is a cost to the city for municipal services, whether it be police, fire, et cetera. That's one thing, to say that with respect to municipal services, they should pay for themselves, or to provide for the infrastructure to support that community. That's something that I think master plan communities or large-scale residential communities can generally handle. To set up as a bar, however, a series of criteria that says it also has to create its own jobs, it also has to meet certain housing, job balance criteria at its inception is a very difficult and a very different kind of standard to impose on large-scale developments, which I dare say, unless you are of the scale of the Tahoe Ranch, unless you are of the scale of Irvine, it will set up a bar which I would question whether you really intend. Residential development should pay for itself, but really only with respect to municipal services and its own infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers?
That's all I have.
On this section, all right. Any questions or comments from the members? All right, we'll move on then. Thank you. So the last section is Plan for Physical Development. Under the introduction, there's no change in the introduction and title, and then the current general plan. I guess I'm going to look at my notes. I guess what I, one of the things I got from this, that if I'm, as I read, as I read, I should say, my notes said discourages annexations to the city of outlying areas. Is that a fair statement? Did I read it right?
Yeah, there's an entire section in here on annexations, and it's...
There's a section here on de-annexation as well, which I thought was interesting.
That's actually a recommended addition to the general plan policy document. No, that was the, sorry.
I keep forgetting this. All of the annexation policies and programs contained in the general plan have been in there since the '97 general plan. The one that recommends looking at, going back and looking at the current general plan boundaries in considering if there is a need for, to consider de-annexation would be a new addition, a new specific addition, action addition to the new general plan. That's the one that's recommended being added this time around.
Under the land use inventory, it mentions the seven redevelopment project areas in Lancaster. Do you, what, I don't know what those are.
Well, there's, unfortunately Vern has left, but, yeah, there's seven redevelopment project areas within the city of Lancaster. And he'd mentioned earlier that those, one of those encompasses a large part of the downtown area. Really, all of those combined together cover about, you know, if you remember the basic boundaries of the urbanizing area, they cover about, about, I would say, about 70% of that area.
Maybe when we consider the land use map, then maybe we could have a copy of that or some visuals so we can get a sense of it, so members can get a sense of it.
Definitely can, we can put, yeah, we definitely can get you, that shows you where all of the boundaries of those seven redevelopment project areas are.
That'd be great.
But essentially, the essential reason for those are is that where you have an area that's covered by a redevelopment project area, that's where the redevelopment agency can apply a lot of its programs, because it is incorporated within one of these project areas.
Okay. My question, do we actually have an inventory of the improved properties and their uses to compare it? I mean, do we have...
I'm sorry, Chairman, which one are we referring to?
17.1 on page six, Roman numeral seven, page six.
Well, one of the first steps undertaken in the general plan update program was to do a land use study to analyze that very question, to determine whether or not we had adequate inventories of land, available land to support the next iteration out to 2030. So that's one of the very first steps we took in the general plan program.
Under the table, we talked briefly, I can't remember which meeting, but we talked about the demand for assisted living type housing. And I suppose there's lots of definitions of what assisted living is, but it's a whole gamut of opportunities for folks who are a little younger than I. And to the multifamily residential designation, that may be an appropriate area to add that or, or maybe a separate category? I don't know.
Yeah, what we're going to have to do, because right now, in fact, in fact, I believe there is at least one, if not two, assisted living developments that are in multiple family zones now. And I think that what we have done, because we, again, we're kind of a little bit behind the eight ball because the zoning ordinance is in so need of being updated, to address some of these new uses, not that assisted living is particularly new, but there is a lot of new definitions and new products that are coming along. And that's one of the things we have to do in modernizing the zoning ordinance when we rewrite it. I know that in the past, we, those facilities have been accommodated in multiple family zones.
But there are some specific needs of that type of living arrangement that may not lend itself well to that. I mean, as far as the needs of that community or of those communities, I should say, and, you know, I think it's going to require some further study. I mean, as the boomers age and, you know, get into that cycle, it's probably the largest single housing opportunity that I think communities are going to face over the next 15 years. They seem to be very popular, and if you have elderly folks in your family, you're becoming well aware of the challenges of assisted living and the limited opportunities one may have in various communities. So I think it's an important part of our task. I'm not sure how to tackle it, but I just want to go on record to make sure that we're going to address it in some fashion, certainly.
Right, that is an important, we do understand that we do need, in rewriting the ordinance, that we need to address this. And it won't be, I don't think, limited just to the hospital zone. Looking, I mean, there would be other alternatives to develop these and other types of products that would be accommodated in different zones, with or without a conditional use. Some of these are going to require, and I think probably the ones that we have looked Some of these are going to require, and I think probably the ones that we have looked at or the ones that exist now probably came in under conditional use permits, but being, trying to create enough latitude to allow this, this product to come into the city because it is going to be needed, that's understood.
I know Mr. Lewicki had pointed out a comment he had on the, on the, on the housing densities under urban residential, actually, I think he was talking about in infill housing patterns up to eight units per acre, at least reading my notes here and some of the communications we've received from him. And under the urban residential, it's at 2.1 to 6.5 and then it goes to medium, 6 to 15. And there's got to be some work done with that, too, I guess.
Right, that's why we were looking at, well, that relates actually to specific action 1821C. And that is, and Brian had actually put together a small presentation regarding that. I'm sure he's going to want to go over that with you. We'll probably do that at the December 1st meeting. But essentially, what we're talking about doing here is allowing a higher, up to eight units per acre in these infill areas, these infill projects, and they're more along single family residential type products, whether they're zero lot line or they're smaller lots than the normal lot size. But being able to do that without having to go through a general plan amendment or zone change even, simply go through a residential plan development through a conditional use permit for the consideration of allowing a density up to eight units per acre under a single family designation. So that's more or less what he's talking about. But he's put together a presentation, I'm sure he's going to want to go through that in detail so that you could discuss that at a greater length. But that's the, that's kind of the...
Maybe some mechanism for a density bonus or something in an infill project? I don't know.
Yeah, there could be provisions for that. I mean, we have that and there's a density bonus provision of the zoning ordinance now, but it applies more to multiple family than a single family product.
It's not a single family. Might be a way to approach it.
Under 17.11D, what's premature fragmentation?
17.11, I'm sorry, B?
D.
D like?
D as in Dana.
Okay.
Says you want to discourage it, I'd like to know what it is.
Yes, this is what Vern was referring to early on with regard to the premature subdivision of property. And obviously, we want to try to discourage that in any way we can because it is a problem when it comes to trying to assemble these properties back together to make them developable. One of the earliest occurrences of that is really the Harrell Track subdivision, which is just east of the, of the, I'm sure as a, as a realtor, you've come across those.
It was called four buying.
Right, and they're so small that most...
You take a 40 and you cut it into a 10, and you take a 10, you cut it into the fortune knives and take the fortune anyway.
Right, and they were subdivided many decades ago to, and I think the story of is that they were given out for newspaper subscriptions or something. And now we're in a problem that's zoned, currently that's, those properties are zoned mostly industrial, light industrial. And, you know, years the redevelopment agency has gone in trying to assemble those to allow to create large enough blocks to develop and it's a real chore. So we want to try to discourage that from happening in the first place.
I know you, I've seen the word hierarchical in this document a number of times, somebody liked that word. I'm not sure I understand its meaning here. Could you explain it?
Yeah, I, what this is really referring to is we want to provide a full range of commercial developments to serve the community. And not, you know, you want to have not only the neighborhood center, but you want to have regional commercial centers that, that will provide for all of the wide range of products that are needed for a long time in this community. And that's not so much the case now, but it still continues to be, to be so to some extent, is we had this economic term called leakage, where you had certain sales tax dollars going down below for products that we didn't have in the valley because we didn't serve certain segments of the market. And so I think this policy, which goes back to at least the 92 general plan, is emphasizing the importance of providing the full range of commercial functions for the community to encourage that to occur through the various programs and policies.
Okay, and the subsection A then makes it a new program with a priority one. So then we'll be identifying likely property locations for designation for either neighborhood, community, regional, or other types of commercial uses then in the proposed land use document, right?
Well, there's a couple of things that are happening here that why this has been considered a new program. Some of these, they were, you never really implement this, but it may have been an existing program under an earlier document. We're considering a new program now because, to a large extent, to addressing this balancing situation that we have with the land use alternatives that we're going to introduce next month and the fact that so many of the areas were not balanced with commercial facilities. And I think that this program addresses that and it also addresses a concern that Vern had earlier regarding the types of new commercial products that are being offered that we don't have, that are being developed in other communities, that like these open-air commercial facilities. So I think that, you know, this is an ongoing process, it's an evolution. And so this is an important specific action to have in place and to readdress every so often.
Another new program, 17.1.4C addresses the Fox Field specific plan and its need to be modified, as Mr. Lawson pointed out, or needs to be reviewed, I should say, not modified necessarily, but needs to be reviewed and updated. If I read that correctly, that's another, it's called a priority three, which seems kind of a low priority considering that job creation creates wealth, which creates a strong community. I would think that that priority likely should move up a bit. So I don't know what the other members think, but we may want to make that recommendation. And the other, these are really administrative functions that will be involved with on 17.1.6A and B as it relates to getting the zoning ordinances and maps and land use maps and the rest of it, consistent with the general plan and that, recommending changes to the zoning ordinance, which ultimately the city council would adopt.
That's great.
Those things, that's all part of our function, our administrative function, if you will, then, over the next number of months, and those are all priority ones. Which means immediate, right?
Immediately.
Okay.
Remind us, what does priority three mean?
That means to, that you're going to initiate the program within a year, a year and a half of the time of the adoption of the general plan. Just for the commission's reference, those priorities, just so you reference them, you need to, are contained on page I-4.
Yeah, priority three says one to three, initiation, one to three years.
Oh, I'm sorry, one to three, one to three years from general plan update, from the initiation of, in other words, from the adoption of the general plan, priority three would be one to three years. But all of those definitions are contained on I-4. You can refer back to those.
Goal 18 on page 14 is a revised goal from what was previously in the plan. However, the land use patterns language is similar. Except for the, except for the non-urbanizing section, which you...
That's possible, I'd have to go back and compare the two, but there was some modification to the goals that occurred during the citizens advisory, recommendations for modifications and goals.
Some wordsmithing.
During, yes, there's a lot of wordsmithing that went on. Really, I don't, there, at the goal level, there wasn't a lot of major modifications. It was just trying to make it work a little bit better, a little, some of them get a little wordy and trying to prove on that.
The concept of form-based codes is relatively new to the general plan, is that correct?
Yes, it is. In fact, I think that really the first application that we'll see of that will be under the downtown specific plan. And it is, it's one of the things that we want to do as part of the ordinance revisions is to include provisions for form-based codes in the new zoning ordinance regulations.
So we'll see more mixed use to accommodate that, correct?
Yeah, it applies more to mixed use. I'm not sure it has to be, it would be restricted solely to mixed use, but that's where you'd probably see it most often in relationship to the general plan and the zoning ordinance.
17.1.6E talks about reduction in standard street widths. Can you comment on the value of that?
Which one was that, Larry? E?
Yeah. It's the third bullet point, reduction in standard street widths.
Yeah, that's, that relates to, with regards to, for instance, with regard to the downtown specific plan, one of the things you want to look at, and one of the things that they're looking at for the downtown is to rework the streets so that you make them more pedestrian-friendly. In other words, you may, you bring the pedestrians into that environment. Right now, and I can attest to this because I walk from the train station to City Hall on a regular basis and back to go home, I use the metro link quite a bit, it's not a pedestrian-friendly environment down there right now. And so that's one of the things that they're looking at and installing potential traffic calming measures and applying other features that would make that environment more pedestrian-friendly. Those would be in selected areas that we're not talking about doing that citywide, but you know, in various areas where that can be applied, where you have the types of developments that are more pedestrian or transit-oriented. That's what this is referring to here.
Mr. Chair, when you first started to conceive the Transit Village project, weren't you going to remove the alleys behind the houses in that area and redo the whole, one of the, several of the streets and...
Yeah, as far back as I can remember, and that's going back a ways with relation to...
It's only 2001.
Yeah, I'm talking about actually going back further than that. I'm talking about going back into the 80s because we've been through the downtown, you know, downtown redesign before, back in the 80s. And even back then, they were trying to address how you deal with the alley, the alleys and work with those. And I think that that will continue. I don't know, I don't, I'm not familiar with the details of the specific plan enough to know what they're, they're planning, but I know that that is a consideration that you need, you know, obviously that you walk down the boulevard and you look down this long alley that's very bleak and that, and that something needs to be done to address the way that will look. As, as the specific plan is developed and takes, develops out, there'll be significant change to the downtown area. This will be years in the making, but it will, there will be significant change to the way it looks. And I think that obviously that's one of the, one of the things that they're going to have to address. And, and there's a number of ways you can do it. But how it's going to look in the outcome, I don't know, but it, it is something that has to be addressed. And I think that they definitely will concentrate on doing that as part of, part of the revitalization of that area.
Question about the fourth bullet point in that same area, 6E, talks about modifications and improvement requirements if the project will result in reduced impacts. I like the idea of rewarding somebody for creating a sense of community, but how was, how was that measured? I mean, is that a negotiation or is there some type of measurement put on that?
At this point, it's in the general plan document, it's just, it's one way you could do it, I don't know what the specifics would be. One thing you could do is you could reduce setback requirements, you could reduce, maybe address parking, reduction of parking requirements and other types of development criteria that you might have some latitude under a specific plan. So I think that's what it's referring to. I don't know, it's really open-ended as far as what eventually would be applied. It probably would be on a case-by-case basis.
So you envision that as a negotiating process?
Yes.
Okay. I like that. I think that's how we're going to get that sense of community that we're striving for is creativity.
On the next page, 17.1.6F, and it's qualified, "Where feasible, concentrate new developments in close proximity to existing developments and pedestrian areas in order to facilitate walking and reduce vehicular traffic." We don't have too many hillsides on the next one, but it does identify that we should be, any developments on hillside should consider the terrain.
I had that same question about the hillsides.
We actually have, of course, we have Quartz Hill that's already being developed. It's part of the Los Hermanos, or at least a big chunk of it is part of the Los Hermanos project. But also out, actually out to the west and along Avenue M, you start to get elevation there. And if you go drive out that way, you can actually have a pretty good view of the valley. And that, that would be considered within the hillside parameters because you do have some elevation. But I agree, there's not a lot of hillside.
I don't know that you call anything north of the aqueduct hillside, I think you call it slope, but anything south the aqueduct would be hills.
Right. Well, that's, that would be the nearest thing we would fit into the hillside criteria.
Yeah.
You have, you have the split, more or less split level lots in those, in some of those areas. But again, yeah, there's not much elevation to deal with.
Yeah.
It's something you just kind of have to, if you have any kind of elevation, all you have to include in your general plan some direction regarding it.
Are we ready for 18.1.1?
You go right ahead.
Okay.
You're ready, go ahead.
You're ready, go ahead. All right, terrific. I just want to get some background on 18.1.1C.
C like Charlie?
C as in Charlie.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, what would you, what did you want?
Just some background on where this existing program would have...
Yeah, this is 18.1.1C. Yeah, this is a...
Yeah, this is a specific action that again has been in the general plan for quite some time. And it relates to concerns expressed by the communities of Quartz Hill and Antelope Acres with regard to the type of development they would like to see within their communities.
That would be identified within the boundaries of their community, right?
Well, it's not, it's kind of hard to say boundary because they're not, they're not incorporated.
In our control, yeah.
Yeah, they're not incorporated areas, so they don't really have a boundary, but they have a, for lack of a better word, a sense of the area that makes up their community.
So are you saying then if developments are proposed within the county's jurisdiction within those areas that are not city jurisdiction, then there's an interface and lobbying going on on behalf of the city encouraging the county to keep the character the same and that sort of thing?
Right.
Okay.
The Quartz Hill community is a little bit better defined.
It doesn't, I...
Yeah, I'm just going to mention...
Open that with what it meant.
We're talking about, this, we're talking what's within the city of Lancaster's control to work, what I'm reading is to work with...
Right.
And support Quartz Hill and Antelope Acres to only allow development consistent with the area's character.
Right, in other words, we're going to support their efforts to remain, to retain their heritage, for lack of a better word.
I guess how realistic is that in light of what we're facing in the upcoming months? I mean, and who is to determine what their preferences are? I mean, there could be people, part of Quartz Hill could think it's great to have certain development and that would fit into their character, and others may think, well, let's keep it this way. Who determines that?
Well, it's, I think it's really their town council that has a strong commitment to contain, to maintain that. And, and I think we've, for a number of years, understood that, that, you know, that is in the city's best interest to support that. With regard to the Quartz Hill community, it's a little bit, because they are more or less an enclave, in other words, surrounded on all sides by either the city of Lancaster or the city of Palmdale, they're pretty well-defined and you, you know, you've got an existing community. With the Antelope Acres community, because it's a rural community, I mean, it's, with them, it's a little bit easier to understand what they care, it's a rural, large lot-type community. And that's definitely what they want to maintain.
Does your question relate to who makes the decisions as, on land use within the city of Lancaster? It would be us.
It would be us, right.
Within us, yes, but with the county, it's going to be the county that has the final...
Support Quartz Hill and Antelope Acres communities to allow, to only allow development consistent with the area's character.
And all we can do is add the...
With lobbying...
I guess it would be the design, I guess...
I think that, I think the way this is written, it's more, or at least in practice, it has been in support of how the county proposes to allow development to take place within those jurisdictions. And whether we would, you know, whether we would support it or not and lobby in favor of it, I am assuming.
That's, that's right, that's what it's saying.
It's, it's not the other way around.
Okay, gotcha.
I think that's...
Right, yes, that's, that's what it means.
Similar to what the one just before, the developments in Palmdale, Los Angeles County, Kern County and so forth, does it meet, ensure the development standards are compatible with ours? Well, sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't, sometimes we win, sometimes we don't. It just...
Yeah, it's true. What we, they, what we do though is part of the general plan program and, I mean, as an, in an ongoing, an ongoing process, because all these agents, they send...
Our sphere of influence goes into the other jurisdictions, theirs goes into ours, right?
Well, our sphere of influence goes into, takes in part of the county of Los Angeles, it doesn't go into Palmdale's, that's a different sphere. But we send each other's plans for review and we comment on those plans.
Right.
So this is an ongoing process. But also, when we do a general plan update, that's one of the things we want to do is look at, if we're proposing land use changes, we want to see what the other jurisdictions, land uses are so that we do have some kind of, wherever possible, have a good relationship between the land uses of the different jurisdictions. And it's not always possible, but that's, it's advantageous to do that because it reduces future land use conflicts.
Okay. Eighteen point one point three A, and we've had this discussion before, I think. The word prohibit areas designated for rural development, that's another negative word. I'd like a less negative word, maybe discourage rather than prohibit.
Exactly what I was thinking. I like the word discourage.
I don't... So that would be a suggestion. I was going to mention to the members too, and when we get to the end, but I'll mention it now, when we're finished with this section and our next meeting is, a special meeting on this subject is the first of December, right? First Monday in December?
Yes.
Whatever it is, whatever day that is, December first. That between now and Thanksgiving or so, if any of us have any, anything that we want to put in writing to Mr. Ludiki relative to things we like or don't like, want to change, changes, recommendations, whatever they may be, if we just put him an email and send him to Brian's office and his Secretary Joy, then we, then they can compile that. And then when we come back at our meeting on the first, we'll have a written synopsis, I guess, of what we may want to discuss. In other words, we'll have a, I'm assuming we will have consensus on the document except for those things that we put in writing. And rather than circulate it to us, to ourselves, that would be potentially a meeting, so we can't do that. But if you circulate it to Mr. Ludiki, then as the director, then he can compile that information and then bring it back to us, either as a recommendation or discussion or whatever the case may be, if everybody agrees to do that. I mean, just, because I know we've all taken notes, we've all scratched our, whatever we've done. So if everybody'd agree, we can just do that over the next couple, three weeks, maybe by, before Thanksgiving, to give them a week or so to pull that data together. Would that be workable, David?
Yes, and that's, in fact, that's one of the things that staff had planned to do is to put together your comments and present them back to you, the things that we picked up over the meetings. In addition to an addendum to this document for the corrections that you brought up, we've been keeping track of those, so we definitely would want to put together some comprehensive document that lists, it reviews the comments that you brought up.
So we can get to consensus before we move to the mapping issue because this document truly is the guide to the, to the mapping. I mean, it gives us the direction and...
That's true, but you have to remember that we're, at this point, we're just in the discussion stages, there'll be other opportunities. You don't, you know, if, just because we finished tonight in the initial review of this document, doesn't mean that you can't come back and press again in relation with future discussions.
Appreciate that, certainly. It's, it's not adopted until it's adopted and that was, will be in February, March, sometime before we adopt it all, probably.
After we review the land, land use, I mean, we will cycle back around to this document, probably...
We'll get the opportunity to make a recommendation on all these documents and you can recommend as part of that modifications to it that you see fit.
Right.
At the time. But those recommendations won't occur until after the environmental process is concluded. Probably, we're looking at probably March next year before you get to that time when you're really going to be considering a recommendation on documents.
So what I'm understanding is really a lot of our comments are going to be more about changing wording, perhaps looking deeper into certain issues, but not making recommendations as to changes to this document yet.
You could certainly, you can certainly do that as part of this process if you feel that, that this is a draft document, if you feel there's, there needs to be modifications, you can make that recommendation as a group to modify it as part of your, your formal recommendation to the city council. What we want is...
Right.
As, as, as you said, what we can, what we are going to do for you is provide a comprehensive list of, of comments that you've made. And we've already, we're compiling the minutes now, I mean, pull this from there.
Well, a lot of the comments are informational and, and reading the document, getting clarification and so forth. I would hope that, that we're not going to get a writing of forty pages of minutes of our comments relative to supporting the document. I mean, that doesn't, if the document isn't, doesn't need to be changed or modified, if we're comfortable with it, I don't know that we need a writing that says that. Maybe we need a writing that says, these are the issues that we're uncomfortable with and these are some of the changes we would like to suggest.
Yes, that's, that's what I understand.
The sooner we put it in writing individually to staff, the sooner you can come to consensus and we can move through it.
Right.
Otherwise, we'll never get done.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I understand that that's what you're, you're looking for and that's what we want to do.
Not that, not that we don't enjoy your company.
On the other hand, though, sometimes we have, I mean, in my case, I've asked questions and I may not be comfortable with the answer.
Right.
So I don't know if you read, you know, through me that I was uncomfortable with that or thought that that should be changed. And that's where it gets a little bit tricky.
That's why, that's why I was suggesting that individually, if we have questions or concerns or comments that we want to reiterate to staff, that we do it in a written form. That way, then there's no question that that's, it's going to be overlooked.
That's fine.
Because rather, I mean, we get five or seven people talking about different issues, it gets a little complicated, I'm sure.
Yes.
Just for me, anyway. Well, it's, somebody mentioned schedule and we got a, we've got a circulation of the potential schedule, which we understand the process we're going through. If we conclude tonight, then we understand the draft environmental impact document will be circulated around the first of December. And then we'll begin at around that same time, the land used alternatives. And we also have a special meeting January sixth and likely one on January twenty-sixth, also one February second. So by the time we get around to the final document, it's likely somewhere either, most likely either the end of March or the second of April when we get down to the, making the final recommendation to the city council.
That's probably a pretty good estimate.
Assuming we keep on schedule like we've been doing. We don't get bogged down somewhere. Speaking of getting bogged down.
Can we go on to the document?
Let's go on, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do that, thank you.
Are we ready to talk about eighteen point one point four?
Point four?
Yeah.
I am.
I guess I'd like some clarification. This seems to be a pretty radical departure from your current policy to require that any multiple-family project have to have the services of a full-time onsite management. Now, it's my understanding, from what I can remember, the real estate law when I, and TESS, when I took it sixteen years ago, that that would require thirty-six, it's either thirty-five or thirty-six units. That's a, that's a rather large development. So that, and it looks as if you're trying to get rid of any triplex and fourplex units being developed in the city of Lancaster, am I correct?
Well, no, that's not, I don't think that's the, the, the direction that this policy is moving in. And by the way, this, this is pretty much, I don't think we, to my recollection, we touched the language of, of either policy eighteen point, eighteen one four or eighteen one four A, specific actions, eighteen one four A or eighteen one four B. I think they read it precisely the way they did ten years ago when I believe they were added to the general plan. And they were added to the general plan because we were experiencing a problem in the community regarding onsite management with particularly individual, a triplex or fourplex unit on an individual lot not having onsite management. And I don't know if you remember the, the projects that came or the concerns that related to High Desert Storm one and two and their, and their, some of the early revitalization projects north of Avenue I where we had those types of situations, very high crime areas that the city, some of the very first places that the city addressed through revitalization efforts. And these, this section of the general plan really came out of those types of problems where we didn't have onsite management of these small apartment projects. And this is not trying to do away with those, it's simply trying to create a, a system where you have, you can guarantee some type of onsite management of these individual units if they are developed or that you don't, particularly you don't have large-scale subdivisions where you have these three, tri or fourplex units on small individual lots without onsite management. And really, that's what came out, that's the background to this, this section of the general plan document and why these, excuse me, why these policies were inserted back ten years ago.
So what you're, you're saying, this would include, I guess I was thinking, you know, with some of these infill projects where you're looking at eight, eight units in a small area that would lend itself really ideally to very affordable housing. And I've seen it in other communities, especially in the West, specifically Tucson, Arizona, where they have, they'll do an infill project of eight, ten units for senior citizens, something like that. Then you're saying as long as there is a management person there, not necessarily living onsite, is that the way this goes?
Well, you know, there was some type of property management situation where you have just a regular program of supervision for that property. By the way, the senior citizen projects were not the problem, problematic projects.
Oh, no, and I know what's behind this, I'm not that naive. I mean, I'm on the streets every day, but it just seemed a little harsh.
Well, this, this was going to, with regard to the eight units per acre, that really was a single-family product, not a multiple-family product. What we were referring to earlier was really a single-family product in a single-family zone, the eight units per acre. Those were actually, would be on individual lots, they were, they would be individual ownership products.
Well, it clearly says to amend the zoning and subdivision ordinance to discourage, and I don't know how you write an ordinance to discourage, you either allow it or you don't. But maybe Mr. Adams can, he'll be tasked with doing that, I guess, assuming we, we agree to this.
It has not been done yet, we've never...
No, it's a brand-new program, it says it's priority two, so it's...
We've never amended the ordinance.
I have a priority.
Yeah, to date. I'm just saying they've been there for that many, that number of years, but we have never updated the ordinance to reflect it.
Well, it, it takes an element of ownership in housing out of the marketplace. I mean, it clearly does that, the way this is written. I'm not sure that by eliminating a type of ownership in housing is a way to control crime. That being the case, you know, one could draw the conclusion possibly that units of thirty and under are more crime-ridden than thirty-one and above and on and on and on. I mean, again, I'm not naive as it relates to crime issues and, and the types of unsupervised housing. But, you know, you get, you're having, we're... housing, but, you know, you get, you're having, we're having a great challenge with single-family dwellings that are a crime problem in the Section Eight arena. Not all Section Eight housing, certainly, but a, enough to make an impact on a community. So, I'm just concerned that eliminating a housing type, a viable legitimate type of housing, if we start here, what's the next step? We eliminate then duplexes, or do we eliminate certain kinds of single-family dwellings? You know, I'm just concerned about that, so.
Well, the larger, the larger, just, just to add on just a little bit, the larger-sized multiple-family projects normally have onsite management. The, the problem with the smaller complexes is that in a lot of cases, they didn't.
I'm not so sure that there is a problem. You say there is, maybe, maybe somebody can produce some statistics for us that tell us that, yes, in fact, triplexes and fourplexes are more crime-ridden than twelve-unit buildings, I mean, or buildings that have onsite managers. I, you know, somebody could easily challenge this kind of a restrictive ordinance and probably make a pretty good case, so I think we better be very careful in what we're recommending to the city council. As a person who believes in property rights, as I think most of us do, I'd be very concerned of eliminating a housing type in a community, because there's a perception of a crime problem. I'd like to know that there is or there isn't, okay?
Again, I don't think the, the purpose of the policy area, the specific action, is to eliminate any type of housing product, it's simply to add a, a level of supervision that, that at least at the time these programs were, were added to the general plan was not there to a large extent.
Well, when you go to the next one, eighteen point one, point four B, it says amend the zoning and subdivision ordinance to require a minimum lot size in multiple-family projects, which would make it infeasible to develop individually-owned triplexes and fourplexes. Now, what does that mean? How do you fit that into your previous comment?
Well, again, I think, again, it's, it's, it's a, a concern regarding a smaller, smaller multiple-family projects. And again, maybe there, there is, this is something that needs to be taken another look at.
Well, I think definitely we're going to need the statistics, because we can't just make rulings basis, on the basis of the other commission's opinion, so if you can produce whatever statistics that are available regarding multifamily, that would be great. The next new program under specific action eighteen point one, point five A is very However, what comes to mind when I read this, as it relates to land use, it could be a tool that we could use to buffer challenging type, challenging, maybe challenging's not the right word, somebody might think I said challenger, or the state prison, Los Angeles County, or the proposed county jail expansion in those areas. Maybe this, we could use this as a tool to buffer the surrounding land uses that those are impacting. That make sense?
I guess there's, the potential exists for that, you could apply it that way. This is specifically talking about more of a rural residential, urban residential interface, this particular specific action.
Well, if you look to the north and the east and the west around, and a lot to the south around those, that vicinity, you've got a whole lot of undeveloped land that,
I guess under eighteen point one, point five A, I was just interested, why would you want to build, reduce the building heights?
Well, normally, it, that's just one, one consideration, these are all considerations that you could apply. You might have a situation where in, normally in a rural residential environment, you don't have tall buildings, unless I guess you have a barn, I don't know if there's that, any left out there in the way of barns, but you tend to have taller buildings in urban residential and, or urban density residential environment. So it's, it's blocking, maybe there's a way that you could look at softening the interface by not having taller buildings abutting rural residential areas, although that is not something that, that we've traditionally applied in the past. Most of the types of treatments that have been applied between urban and rural residential densities have been landscape, increased landscape setbacks, larger lot zoning within the urban density area that abuts the rural residential zone. In other words, you have, rather than having a standard R seven thousand or a ten thousand wide lot, you increase the width of those lots to make them look more rural, where you have that interface. So those types of things are the more common types of applications that have been applied since the time that these, these provisions were added to the general plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Danny Flute? Okay, how about eighteen point two, point one C? I think this is where Mr. Ludick, he wanted to talk to us about this, or you, are you going to talk to us in his stead about-
I, what I'm recommending is that he, he's prepared, as I mentioned earlier, a brief presentation, and I think I'd rather, if that's, I mean, I can, we can go over it, I did touch on it briefly, but it'd probably be best to let him go over the details of that regarding-
So we'll take that up on December first?
Yeah, we can do that on December first.
Very good, thank you. Eighteen point three, point two A, that's the, that's the new section as it relates to conduct a review to, of the incorporated boundaries to determine if there are areas which could be considered for de-annexation. That's a new one, huh? Probably worthwhile.
I guess what would put into your vision, I mean, I know this is conjecture, would qualify a, a part of the city to be de-annexed or no longer part of the city? What, what criteria would you look at?
Well, you, I think you would, you might want to look at some areas that, that simply don't, don't make sense for long-term development, that are really not needed in the distant future for development. And during the, the, this section of the general plan really came about and was added to the, the document, with, with exception with this, this particular specific action. But the other policies on annexation were added under the ninety-seven general plan because of the annexation, annexations that occurred during the late eighties and early nineties, within a four-year period, we effectively doubled the city's size. Well, we did it in a manner, the city did it in a manner that, that where you, if you look at the, a boundary map of the city of Lancaster, you have some pretty, uh, discontiguous boundaries, particularly on the West side. You have some areas where you have pockets that are within the county, and other areas that are within the city. There are some areas where you can, you can go for three miles and go in and out of the cities and into the county seven times. And so obviously, those create problems, because they may be, they may be areas that you never were able to, to annex into the future, to try to, to square off boundaries and make those areas more realistic for development. So there may be some areas that you simply will not, that stretch so far out that just don't make sense to keep within the city limits. And so you want to have the ability to be able to do that, because once these areas are developed, they're developed, you know, you, you have to deal with those areas in perpetuity. You're, you're faced with, with providing city services wherever, as long as those areas are developed. So you want to make sure that when you look at the future development of the city, that your boundaries make sense. And there may be some areas that don't, that you want to consider de-annexing for those reasons.
Okay, anything else? And the nineteen section is all new, if you will, new programs, new, new goals, new objectives. I think the entire section's new, isn't it?
Pretty much so. This, this section replaces an earlier section known as community forum, which was created under the ninety, the nineteen ninety-seven general plan, largely from input, citizen input at that time. And it was kind of an intermediate step towards creating a community design section, but it never really quite coalesced. And so this time around, the city took some additional steps with regard to moving in this direction, one of them being the formation of the ad hoc design committee two, three years back, and now the architectural committee under the current council. And so this is putting into the general plan, rewriting this section so that, number one, it calls for the adoption of community design guidelines. This doesn't, this isn't community design guidelines, it's simply policies and programs that call for the adoption of, of development and adoption and implementation of community design guidelines, and gives a, a very general outline for, for how those guidelines might look.
And it's all priority one, for the most part, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
It's all priority one, for the most part, all of, all of these.
This would be, this would be something that would be carried out in line with the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance and those other portions that we would do immediately upon adoption of the general plan.
So this commission's will have a primary role in this, as well as, I guess, to some degree, the architectural and design group?
The, with regard to the community design guidelines, you will be, you will see those once they're put together as a draft document and have a chance to go through those, yes.
All right. Okay. One of the new, one of the sections incorporating, you know, the buffer transitions, nineteen point two, point four A, I think, we taught, it's in there somewhere, I thought, four A.
It is, I think it's twenty four.
Yeah, two point four A, between conflicting land uses, and I'm not sure what conflicting land uses are, but would you consider all residential as being non-conflicting?
I think really what this is, is referring to is, is uses that really, where you have, like, you have industrial uses that might have bought commercial residential uses or something that really truly is-
Okay.
That needs some type of buffering.
All right. Well, so, I mean, it's very, it's very extensive, that's for sure. Gets into the bike paths and pedestrian trails and medians and parkways and landscaping and all the rest of it.
I guess, I wonder if by being so specific and so careful about every single aspect, you might be limiting the opportunities here for development. Do you, did you fear that at any point, or did you discuss it at all?
Um, the intent of doing this was to provide a general outline for the development of very specific guidelines. Is, I, so the data that's contained in there really is, really just an overview of what might be contained, or giving general direction for the development of those guidelines. The guidelines themselves would be much more specific, and they would be, but, and I don't have at this point, and I don't know what the outcome of those will be, but they would be, they would be guidelines that you'd use to, to apply to development of the community.
Well, one example might be where it says under nineteen point two, point six A, ensure that all new utility lines are placed underground as feasible. Well, anything's feasible, I suppose, if you put enough money at it, but some communities have ordinances on the books, undergrounding ordinances for utility lines for up to, you know, up to twelve thousand volt lines, but you get into the fifty, there's sixty-six KV and that stuff, the transmission lines, typically you don't underground those. I mean, it's horrendously costly, and I don't know that you benefit from it. For example, Tenth Street West has a plethora of sixty-six KV lines, both north and south, and then down Avenue M, east and west, running from the substations and so forth. I mean, you would add huge amounts of cost to development, and it's just, and the things are up in the air fifty feet, I mean, you don't really see them. But I can certainly foresee undergrounding, you know, your, your typical feeder lines that are in the community locally, like twelve thousand volt lines and below. There's, you know, neighboring communities have those ordinances on the books, and those are typical standard development requirements, but as an ordinance supporting it, I, I guess what this is saying, we don't have an ordinance in this city that requires it. It says encourage here, well, if you want them undergrounded, you better pass an ordinance.
It says we're feasible.
Hmm?
In other words, it, it, you know, there may be very, we may be very limited on what we can do with, like you said, due to cost on, on some of these-
Well, it's just, I mean, it's, it's horrendous, the cost of anything other than, and twelve thousand volts is a big line. I mean, that's typically what would, what any large development would require. They don't typically require anything more than that.
Now, there are, there are undergrounding, you know, there are regulations that require new development to underground the lower order power lines now on the books.
Yeah, okay. Good. And your section twenty is the same entirely as it was in the, in the twenty-twenty general plan.
Right, I don't think we made-
Right. No changes at all.
Just minor, there's maybe some minor, just minor word spitting.
Okay. All right. So do, does anyone have any more comments before we take any public testimony? Anyone? Okay. So, now would be the time that the public would be invited to comment on the last section we've just reviewed. If we have any speakers or any speaker cards, we'd be happy to hear them. Do we have any? Nope? All right. So our next meeting is December first here at six p.m. Our next special meeting is December first here. And if, and if everyone who wishes to, wishes to put their comments or concerns in writing and email them to Mr. Ludicki's office prior to Thanksgiving, that'll give him an opportunity to compile them with the remainder of our comments, and so- to compile them with the remainder of our comments and so, we'll have something to look at when we get finished, when we meet again on December 1st. So, that meeting, we would be discussing whatever you present to us and then getting into the mapping review, right?
That's correct.
So, for visuals, just curious, what will we have? What will we have to work with?
Well, we're still working on the PowerPoint presentation for that, but what we generally, what we want to do for you is present each, you've already had, in the initial meeting, we went through kind of the evolution of how the alternatives were, came to be. What we want to do is go into the details of each of those. And so, we want to break them down and look at different areas of the city, maybe the central core, the east side and the west side, and then get more specific about where these changes occurred in each, with each of the alternatives and why. And that type of information so that you have more of a working knowledge about how each of the maps would function if they were to be adopted as, or some version of those were to be adopted as the future general plan.
So, you're just going to give us an overview basically then? And then ultimately, we'll get a recommendation from staff? Is that how this is going to go?
Well, not at this next meeting. This next meeting is just very similar to the discussion of the policy document. All we'll be doing at those meetings is really just going over and familiarizing ourselves with each of the alternatives and introducing the aspects of those alternatives to you and allowing a discussion, also, you know, comments from the public regarding that.
So, we're dealing with a, we're dealing with a map scale that if, you know, we're 15, 17, 19 miles long by 6, 7, 8 miles high, right? And if you're going to put it up on that screen for us to view it, it's going to be really a challenge.
Well, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to be a parcel-by-parcel review because the maps, you're right, they can't show that detail. But, what we will have for you is graphics that enlarge sections of the city so that you can see where the land use changes occurred between each of the alternatives. And the purpose for those meetings is really to discuss each of those alternatives and how those alternatives would be applied as a general plan map. There'll be other opportunities to discuss the maps. This is not the only opportunity to do that.
I understand.
And obviously, we won't be, we wouldn't be looking at making recommendations on any alternative until after the general plan or until after the program environmental impact report, the draft EIR has gone through a public review periods because all of that input has to come in. So.
But, that period runs from December through the end of January.
That's right.
So, in the interim, in our December, January meetings, we're going to be reviewing the map process or baseline as well as suggested, recommended from whatever its source changes.
Right, in other words, and one of those.
My concern is the scale. How do you, you know, it's a visual process, right? It's a, it's a, it's a visual.
Yes.
So, we must have visuals that we can read and understand and take away and study and that sort of thing is what I'm suggesting. I hope we should have that.
Yeah, the map itself, the map, the entire general plan is mapped, is a digital map. So, you know, we have parcel-level data. If we want to look at any of those areas, we can do that. But, what I'm suggesting for this first, and what I think the director intended for this first meeting, is to go through at a larger-scale area and look at the, need break this into areas, but look at, look at the changes between and really look and explain and go over the changes that have occurred that exist between those alternatives so that we have a good understanding of how those are compiled. And there will be other opportunities to go down. And obviously, we've been receiving correspondence for months from various members of the public regarding requests for land use changes. And those will all have the opportunity for, I mean, they all have the opportunity for input. That will all be considered as part of the public input process. When we get to that stage where we introduce that information, we will have very detailed, you'll get all of the correspondence. You'll have, we'll set that up in a matrix format so that each of these are outlined of what they're asking for and what they're requesting. And eventually, there will be a staff recommendation regarding each of them. And then, there will be a map that keys those locations so you know where they're at. And we can not instantaneously produce those higher-level graphics, but we can produce them if we need to study various areas of map at greater detail. But, yeah, indeed, you have to keep in mind that we're dealing with a 94-square-mile area. That's how big the city is. It's a big, it's a big city geographically.
All right, very good. Just want to make sure we're making our time productive and I'm sure we will.
Definitely want to do that.
It's a huge effort that you folks are gathering, that's for sure. All right. Director's announcements, any?
None.
None. Our agenda, we've talked about what we, our little homework assignment. So, at this time, any public business from the floor on any non-agendized item, this portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state law, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Any person wishing to address us would need to fill out a card and you have three minutes. So, do we have any speakers' cards? Looks like we do. All right. Mr. Zink?
Yeah. Just a recommendation, when I watch the meetings from home on the TV, it's kind of hard to know what you guys are talking about. Like, I was watching the Long's Drugs. There was a CUP and a project site approval from you guys. And it would be nice if there was some kind of writing at the bottom of the television to say where the location is of the project and what the project is, you know, when you're watching it. Because sometimes you go to the restroom, kitchen, or you don't even, you know, you just turn it on and you don't know where you guys are at and it takes you to the end of the comment period to find out what you guys were really talking about. Also doing that thing, they're talking about alcohol and you guys go on so long on alcohol. It's, I don't know if you do it for political correctness or what, but I just think it's ridiculous to listen to all this stuff. I was at the city council in Palmdale. This guy at Rancho Inn on Palmda Bowl just wants a beer and wine license so he can sell, make an extra 40, 50 bucks a day. And there's a school, Muslims' school and church across the street and they're complaining about it and stuff like that. That's why I say, don't let churches and schools be built in commercial districts. And that's what should have been added to the alcohol ordinance. But, as far as alcohol sales, let's get over this in this valley. Let's do sales from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 and be done with it because it's anti-business and it's just, let's get over it. And that's what I want to make. Because when you sit out here, you guys went on for like an hour and a half on that. It was just ridiculous. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. All right then. Any other speakers? None. Then, we are adjourned until Monday, November 10th at 5:30 PM in a large conference room of the planning department for our monthly briefing. Thank you.